Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, April first. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? additions. Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Our next, we have an employee recognition this morning. All right. Holly Seville, twenty years, huh?
Yes.
Well, thank you for your dedicated service to Clay County. And Kirsten, I think you want to say something?
Say something about Holly. So yes, Holly's worked at social services for twenty years, the last thirteen, correct? In the behavioral health unit. And I've had the opportunity to work with Holly for the last thirteen years as a coworker and then as her supervisor. And the one characteristic that has stood out the most for me in regards to Holly is her genuine connectivity with clients. It's not easy to gain trust and earn trust of our clients. And Holly's down-to-earth demeanor and her just realness assist in her ability to do that. And we've had conversations over the years about a couple of individuals in particular, and you know who I'm talking about. But you have been that constant. You have been their cheerleader, their support, their voice of reason. And that is invaluable. So all I can say is, congrats on your twenty years and keep doing what you're doing because that is your greatest attribute.
Do you have your speech ready?
Um, I do not. You don't want to get into talking.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Kirsten. All right, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda this morning?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Kravenhoff. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from March eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is a public hearing regarding Red River Valley Co-op Power petition for rezoning. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
I move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kravenoff and second by Commissioner Bear to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. We'll turn it over to Matt. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So before you is a petition for rezoning for a property from Agricultural General Urban Expansion District Tier Two to Highway Commercial, brought by Red River Valley Co-op Power and the Rural Electric Supply Cooperative, and the landowner is Barry Olberg. So this is right on the corner of Cassau Eighteen and Thirty Fourth Streets, so it's north of the Resource Recovery Center and the Walmart. The zoning right now, the base district is Agricultural General, and then there's an overlay district, Urban Expansion District Tier Two, that is tied to the city of Dilworth's urban growth area. So the request is to petition, or is the, to rezone this property, only the portion that is in this subdivision that is shown here. Currently, it's, uh, land uses is agricultural. There aren't any structures on the property. Pretty high prime farmland, but again, it's in that growth area. And so the proposal here is two parts. So on one of the lots of the subdivision, Resco, they are looking to build a forty to sixty thousand square foot distribution warehouse on a fifteen-acre lot in this two-lot-platted subdivision. And so this is actually an example of, um, they're building, uh, building in Wisconsin, and they're looking to do basically the exact same thing here. So, and when it's built, um, looking at opening this up in, in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, uh, be about thirty employees on site here. And then, um, Red River Valley Co-op Power, they're looking, um, to build a service center on the second lot of this subdivision. It's a smaller lot, five acres. Here's some examples of what that would look like. Essentially, a place to store and house their maintenance equipment and their trucks and for their linemen. And they're looking at building that in the next, um, two to three years as well. In terms of the two lots in this proposed subdivision, um, they would essentially meet all the highway commercial standards. And the subdivision right now, it's, as I had mentioned, it's in the ET area, the extraterritorial area of the city of Dilworth. So the city of Dilworth has the subdivision jurisdiction where we have the zoning jurisdiction. And they did recommend, uh, they did approve the preliminary plat. And I think, I believe that if this rezoning is passed this morning, then, um, the city of Dilworth will, uh, look at approving the final plat tomorrow, at their meeting tomorrow.
So Matt, any, any action that we would take today, would we have to be contingent on that, or are we, are we just going to assume that that will happen?
I think at this point, just because the preliminary plat was approved, that yes, I think that would, um, it would happen. Yep.
Thank you.
So, and they did have some conditions on their, on their plat, um, just getting, making sure that they have utility easements, roadway accesses and things like that, um, a development agreement for future extension of city utilities to the property. And then any, um, they did have, give the planning commission an opportunity to add in any comments as well. And the planning commission did not do that, so. Again, this, um, just looking at our comprehensive and transportation plan goals and objectives, this proposed rezoning really does kind of fit with the goals and objectives for land use and development in our comprehensive plan, especially with the city of Dilworth being on board with this as well. And so, um, yeah, the recommendation from the planning commission was unanimous to rezone just the subject section of that plat. So not the entire property, just what would be in that, described in that cooperative energy subdivision. Any questions for me at all?
I have one question, Chair.
Yes.
So it'd be the west twenty acres of that eighty.
Correct. Yep. And we did have some, um, public comments at the, at the planning commission meeting as well. But, and nothing from the township. Also had comments from the city of Morehead, and they said they didn't have any issues.
All right. Any question? Yes, Commissioner Evinger.
Were there any issues expressed by the public on this?
I think just the, the main concern, um, being just the future developments, moving out kind of into the, to the more rural areas of the, of the county. But I think once, um, the public who were concerned kind of saw what the plans were, I think those concerns were, were alleviated.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that comment was addressed in the, at the planning commission level, right?
Yep.
Comments in the. Any other questions from the board? Anything additional from the applicant?
Very thorough, so unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. All right, at this time, the applicant didn't have anything else to add. Anything else from the board that we need to have while the hearing is open? If not, I'd change a motion to close the hearing. Oh, yeah, public input, yes. Any other public input? Any other public input? Commissioner Evinger.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'll move to close the public meeting.
Open.
Hearing.
Oh.
Or close it, you want to close the hearing?
Yeah, close it.
Okay, I'm sure you're right.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have, I've served on the planning commission for a while, and I know this company is, uh, invested in making sure that they address any gaps in coverage throughout the county. This is, uh, the second proposed site, and this one really seems to fit better maybe with, uh, some of the concerns that came out of the last one. And, and given the fact that the city of Dilworth is also supporting this, I think it is something that this board should also support.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I, I think this is, this site is really a, a good location for this. And I think, if I remember right, back when the previous site was select, part of what they want to do is they wanted to bring some of their utility shop things closer to the, uh, other parts of the, their service area. And, and so this is, this is a critical component, I think, to help have faster access, you know, in times of trouble maybe for, uh, for their customers. They have a shorter time, timeframe to get those folks there. So this is, I think this is a really good fit, so. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, and now.
We just closed the public hearing.
Yeah, we just closed the public hearing. Yep, now we got a.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the rezoning of the portion of the subject property as described in the packet.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I might also, uh, notice that, uh, we've worked through the findings of fact at the planning commission and, and given that recommendation in the packet as well, would, uh, reflect in my motion.
Okay. So the motion and the second then, including, includes the findings of fact provided by the planning commission. All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. That is done. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, applicants. Good luck with you in the future. All right.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the request to approval for, uh, overfill deputy position due to military leave. Good morning, Sheriff and Chief Deputy Martin. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here this morning. Uh, our request is to overfill a deputy position. Currently, we had a deputy that was deployed, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and he is anticipated to be deployed until about December ninth. We did meet with the pick committee on March eighteenth to discuss this. During that meeting, we discussed several things to include, um, the twenty twenty-six budget challenges that the county may face due to some state, uh, state budget challenges as well. I think we're all aware of what, what, what those may be. But as you can see from the handout, we did, uh, we did look at what, what budget savings would be with the deputy gone, and then what the cost would be if we did overfill that, that position. My plan was for twenty twenty-six to add this position into the twenty-six budget. But with, uh, with seeing what the savings would be, we just thought we'd take an opportunity now to see if we'd be able to overfill and get somebody started sooner rather than later. With that, I would yield to the board, um, for questions, or if Chief Deputy has anything to add.
Maybe I can just, um, give a little brief overview of our conversation at PIC. And, um, ultimately, PIC felt that this was an appropriate, uh, thing to do, to move forward with this. Uh, we did talk about the uncertainties of twenty twenty-six and, and, uh, we had a quite lengthy conversation about that. And, and I think the, the recommendation of PIC, of course, would, would be to approve this and, and then to have the sheriff, um, put it in his twenty twenty-six budget. But at the same point in time, I think we, we kind of put the message out there that with the uncertainties of twenty twenty-six, you know, we may have to deal differently through attrition or something as, as, as maybe a way to deal with this. Hopefully, we won't have to get to that point, but, but that's kind of the, where the conversation was and that we, as a PIC committee, could support moving this forward. Commissioner Evinger, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, a couple of factors we took into consideration, this position is part of a task force that requires a Minnesota participation. At this time, the deployed employee was part of that task force. And Morehead, uh, because of their issues with staffing, has not been able to put somebody on that assignment. So this would effectively hamstring having a very valuable task force, uh, engaged in Minnesota issues. You need to have a Minnesota badge with them. Additionally, it, it's clear, I think, the sheriff and the chief deputy were, were aware when we described our concerns about future budget encumbrances, that this is an overfill and that it will not be restaffed through, uh, through, uh, when attrition occurs if we don't have the ability to open up a new position in two thousand twenty-six. This is an investigative position, and I've always been surprised how lean the sheriff's office has, has been running here on those positions. And when you need somebody to do it, particularly given that our partner agency is having staffing issues of their own, if you need somebody to conduct investigation, it's not something you can fill with an overtime or, or bring somebody in. It's got to be an investigator. So I think this is a critical position. And PIC has decided, uh, to make a recommendation on this and we fill it. And I, I am part of that decision. Think it's a prudent one.
And I do understand that, uh, we could have to look at future positions. I'm hoping it doesn't come to that. I don't have any division that's really, uh, over, overly, uh, full right now. I mean, we're all kind of running bare bones by the time you factor in sick time, vacation, comp time. Who knows what E S S T is going to bring to us, so it's, there's, uh, there's a lot of things to consider as we move forward with this as well.
And, and, you know, and that, that was the difficult conversation that we had, and we had to at least put that, uh, potential thought out there. Because we could, we could be having this same issue with several of our other departments, you know? And so, so we need to make sure that we're, um, being consistent with all of our departments. But this is a, I look at this as a critical position too, that, that we need to, uh, be maintaining, so. Any other comments or questions?
I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Bear.
Sheriff, emptying the, so this person will be on the investigation division?
Yep, that is correct.
All right.
Essentially, what we would do is we'd hire somebody for a patrol-level position, and somebody that is currently a deputy would have an opportunity to move into investigations.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Commissioner Evinger.
And Mr. Sheriff, make a motion to approve the hiring of a deputy to overfill the sheriff's position in investigations due to a military deployment.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
You got, you got, are you, you got the search going?
Yes, yep, we have, uh, we have advertised for the Minnesota Post Board. I did look on the post board site before I came over here today. There's a hundred and forty-four departments across the state of Minnesota that are currently looking for officers or deputies, and that's, that's a lot. As of last week, it was one fifty, so it's dropped a few, but there's, there's a lot out there, yeah.
All right, well, good luck.
Triple what, what it was when I was just a few years ago, when I was working.
Twenty years ago now.
It was twenty departments sometimes, you know, back then. Now it's, now it's up to quite a few.
All right, our next item, we have, um, annual update and request approval, the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen for Clay County to act as legal sponsor for D N R funding for Snowville Trails managed by Clay County Trail Alliance. How appropriate are we going to talk about Snowville?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, I don't believe that Greg is here yet.
Oh.
He's here at nine o'clock, and so I, you do have Justin here who has the next couple of items that we could.
All right, Justin. We'll, we'll move into, um, item number five. Request approval.
Yes, good morning. So the first item I have is requesting approval to advertise for yearly split, yearly supply bids. So what this is, is it's gravel. We also get bids for bituminous mixture if we want to buy anything to patch culverts, and then also if we need to rent construction equipment. So the bids will be opened April thirtieth at the highway department, and then I bring it forward in a packet for approval on May sixth. Any questions?
One question, Mr. Commissioner.
Do you bid each of those individually, or do you bid those as one?
Individually.
Individually bids?
Yep, and so gravel, for example, is bid in thirty different, so it's all thirty townships get a separate number. And then we also allow the opportunity for townships to join our bid. So far, we have three, and then one city.
How, how many townships do you normally have?
Usually about three to four, yeah.
But there are some items where we have multiple vendors that we approve, right?
Correct. So bituminous mixture, we usually, we try to get a number from everybody, so we get a number from northern, central, just, and it's basically laid out in there that if they're paving or something, that we obviously understand we can't get mixed. But depending on where we're at in the county, it's nice to have numbers to be able to buy mix from whoever.
Yeah, same with culverts.
Correct.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am curious to see how these will come in, given some of the uncertainty, uncertainty of some of our bids that we've received, certainly on the low end. I'm hopeful that it could be duplicated with these numbers as well.
Definitely.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve advertising for the yearly supply bids with the letting date of April thirtieth.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kravenoff. Any further discussion?
One, one other question for staff.
The gravel bid, do you gravel a certain, certain type of gravel there, or is it?
Yeah, so we, it's, it's a class one modified, so we have our own gradation that we call out that the contractor has to meet, and we have a testing schedule in which we run all the gradations.
All right.
And then each year, the gravel map is different based on needs throughout the county, so.
So you set the specs for the gravel?
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, your next item is a request to approve advertising for SAP zero fourteen dash six forty-five dash zero zero two.
Yes, so this is approval to advertise for the Millan Overlay project on Cassau Forty-Five. So it is the, it is in Dilworth. It's a little horseshoe through town. Pretty simple project. This is on the five-year plan, and it's been planned for quite a while, so excited to get this one done. And then this was also approved at Dilworth City Council via resolution last week for state aid projects within municipalities. There is a resolution to support that needs to be completed, and that was last week, so.
Any questions?
I'll move to approve the advertising Millan Overlay project on Cassau Forty-Five in Newark. SAP oh fourteen, six forty-five, oh oh two, with a letting date of May sixth, twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Anything else for us this morning, Justin?
No, hopefully we don't get, uh, on the high end of the snow that we're predicting.
Bow still on the trucks.
Yeah.
So I just, uh, I happened to see through some of Commissioner Mojo's work down in St. Paul that you were also down there on behalf of Clay County, and I just want to thank you for.
Absolutely. It worked out perfect. I was down there for a conference, so.
Yeah. Thank you for being able to be there in support of the needs of Clay County, so.
Definitely.
I just wanted to comment on that. When, when you know that there might be some technical questions that come up, there's nothing more reassuring than having your own county engineer present in case something were to come up. So I do really appreciate you dropped everything to head over to the Capitol for that hearing.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are.
I could do mine, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Number, uh, number ten.
Okay, Steve, let's do number ten. We're looking for a request for to submit congressional-directed funding application for the West Central Regional Water District project.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as this board is aware, we're working closely with Norman and Polk County to establish a rural water district. Uh, and through that process, uh, the, the board has worked diligently to find, uh, additional, uh, resources to, to fund this project, uh, both at the state and, uh, local and federal level. And so before you this morning, uh, is consideration to submit, uh, to, for congressional-directed funding through Senator Klobuchar's office. Uh, the request before you this morning is, would be an amount of five million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is about a five percent increase over what, uh, this board requested last year through this process. Uh, again, as, uh, this board has heard in the past, this is part of a, a process or a staging. Uh, the, the focus of these, these fundings would affect, uh, Vining, Felton, Cragness, Morkin, Flowing Keen, Cromwell, and then the cities of Yulin and Holly. Would, uh, would, where these funding, fundings, funding dollars would be directed as part of the application. Uh, there is some staging, and so that, uh, the minimum amount that we would ask would be, ask for would be about three point three million dollars. Uh, but the hope, uh, the hope, total project is about six million, but we'd be requesting the five million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Just to, um, keep everything above board here, too, um, our, our administrator reached out to me on Friday about this, I believe it was. And, and this is basically a, a resubmitting, uh, to a previous application that we had done. And the deadline for that was actually yesterday. And so there was, um, uh, I gave Steve the approval on behalf of this board, because it was a resubmital, to go ahead and sign that, uh, to make sure that we got it in, in, in time. And so this action is a follow-up to that, uh, that action, to make sure that we met those, those timelines, so. Any further discussion? And I want to thank you, Steve, for being on top of that too, to make sure that we were able to meet those timelines, so.
It, it did get submitted yesterday, so.
Yes. Okay, so we're looking for the, um, the board's approval of the, uh, resubmitting of that congressional directed funding application.
So I'll make a motion to approve the submitting congressional-directed funding application for the West Central Regional Water District project.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Chair and Board, for your flexibility.
I bet. All right, um, we have. All right. Why don't we, let's see, what else do we have here? Why don't we just? Jackie, do you have something? Okay, let's take a, let's take our break right now. At this point in time, we will, uh, move to our agenda, item number eight. And that is a recognition of proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and. And that is a recognition of proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I would imagine you have some opening comments.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to ask for your support in proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month here in Clay County. Our kiddos are our future, and it's up to all of us. Saying is, it really does take a village, and it does, to help create a safe, supportive environment for children where they can thrive. Child abuse is a serious issue that affects families and communities, but prevention is possible when we work together and support one another. This proclamation is about raising awareness, encouraging community involvement, and reminding everyone that we each play a role in protecting children and supporting families in our community. Thank you for considering this important recognition and for your ongoing commitment to the safety and well-being of children in Clay County. With that, I would ask that we proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month.
All right. We will start by reading the proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Minnesota and Clay County. Whereas.
In the year twenty twenty-four, Clay County Social Services has completed three hundred and five assessments and investigations of families and licensed facilities, two hundred and twenty-one assessed children, assessed children for reports of alleged child abuse or child neglect, providing one hundred and sixteen families with child protection slash child welfare case management services, and provide care and services for one hundred and seventy-six children in, out of home placement. Whereas.
Child abuse is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community. It can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that may cause lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas.
Effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of meaningful and trusting relationships or partnerships created between parents, practitioners, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas.
Family-serving youth-focused prevention programs offers positive alternatives for young people, encourage parents and youth to develop strong ties to their communities, as well as protective factors that reduce or eliminate risk by promoting social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas.
We acknowledge we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to the promotion of children and families' social and emotional well-being in safe, stable, and nurturing environments.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clay County, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, thereby strengthening communities in which we live.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ebinger.
Just real briefly, I had the, the honor, working with your division for twelve years, leading the Moorhead Police Department, whose detectives worked with your people in so many of these cases. I also worked these cases and led a squad of detectives that worked in my prior employment. And I want to reach out and thank you and your employees for doing something that is one of the most difficult investigative jobs in the world. I've seen many, many big, tough cops who couldn't work these cases because they, they, number one, weren't aware of the self-care it takes to stay in the game on this. And number two, it is so depressing that there's more fun things to do, like working homicides, than dealing with children who have been broken and battered. Your division has always sought to it that your investigators get self-care and mutual support that's necessary. Your predecessor did that, and as in everything I've seen so far, you're carrying that torch. So I'm grateful for it, but please be mindful on, on how detrimental this is to your people. You know that, you've worked it. And let us know if there's something you need to that and to keep everybody in the game. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Those are good words, and I just, I want to agree with that. And on behalf of our board, I think it's, we're all grateful for the work that's done and the difficulties of the jobs that are done, especially in this regard. It's, it's never easy. We, we can see some of the things that happen as a result of what we have in our juvenile centers and the difficult work that goes in. And it's, it's got to be tough. So thank you to all of your team for the work that they do. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you, Quinn. Oh, oh, yes. Oh, oh, yes. Yes, we have to vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carried. Thank you. My jet lag must be. All right, so we will move right into your update. And you have several folks with you today. Looks like we have Michelle and Kirsten. And Amy. Yes, Amy is here. And Tiffany. All right. Quinn, are you going to start it off?
I'll be very brief, and then I'll stop talking and let
All right.
true experts
Okay.
take over from there. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We are here to give you, I say, part one of three of Social Services Annual Departmental Overview. Today, we're going to be touching on our Behavioral Health and Adult Protection Division, as well as our Children and Families. Very, very brief overview in terms of our organizational chart. What you'll, what you'll hear today represents the green columns and the blue column in Kirsten's unit, and then the Child Protection Division, which is Amy Amundson, Tiffany January, and Michelle Thordal as well. Quick highlights of Social Services. We have one hundred and forty-nine full-time staff, one variable hour. We're comprised of eight divisions with eleven units that make up those divisions. Again, hearing about two of the divisions today, with more to come next week and the week following. And just a brief overview of our other divisions and social services there. To note, we also have our office support, which is typically doesn't have a departmental update component to it, as well as our fiscal supervisor and the four staff that work in central accounting that do social services work as well. With that, I'm going to kick it over to Kirsten to speak to our Adult Mental Health and Adult Protection and Civil Commitments.
Good morning, Chair Campbell and Commissioners. Commissioner Mayor, I have not had the opportunity yet to meet you. It's nice to meet you. Like Quinn said, I am Kirsten Lepard, and I supervise our Behavioral Health and Adult Protection Division. They are three very separate units that make up our larger unit. So I'm going to start with our Adult Mental Health Division. Currently, we have five full-time staff, four that focus on civil commitments, and one who does Rule Seventy-Nine targeted case management. So an overview of adult mental health and what we do, like I said, we do pre-petition screenings and civil commitments based off of statute two fifty-three B. We monitor individuals at the Minnesota Sex Offender Program, and our folks that are committed as mentally ill and dangerous that are at state facilities. Typically, those are located in St. Peter. We have two staff that do Level Twos, which are the pre-admission screenings for mental illness for individuals that are looking to be placed in a nursing facility. And that is to ensure that the most appropriate placement and recommendations for mental health services are received when they are located in a nursing home. And then we have Lori, who is our sole targeted case manager, who maintains a consistent caseload. Commissioner Krabnoff, you hear that every month at our LAC meeting, that Lori is consistently full with her caseload. So that makes up the staffing pattern of our folks within the Adult Mental Health Unit. So just an overview of our pre-petition screenings for the past couple of years. The numbers have gone down, and in twenty twenty-four, on paper, it looks significantly lower, and I will chat about that in a little bit. But consistently, and Mr. Milton can attest to this as well, is that we have had pretty high numbers of folks that we are asked to pursue civil commitment on that are stemming from a Rule Twenty. And so that's from a criminal case. There has been some type of arrest, and it's been determined that due to their mental illness, they are not able to aid in their defense. So per statute, then, it switches from a criminal matter to a civil matter, and those numbers have been pretty consistent over the past couple of years. So like I said, our number of actual commitment cases has gone down over the past year. But I will tell you, just because our numbers have gone down, that doesn't mean the work has gone down. The cases are extremely complex. The individuals' needs are severe. Our placement options are limited. And so the numbers may be lower on paper, but overall, the workload is consistent, if not greater, just because of those barriers and what we're seeing with each case. Do you want to take this one?
Yes, I wanted to jump in here and just speak to that a little bit. The civil commitment process in Minnesota, it really does serve a critical role in ensuring public safety, providing necessary mental health care for the folks that we serve. But it does have a very significant financial obligation for counties, particularly in the does-not-meet-medical-criteria realm. You'll see this when I, when I do the, kind of the budget overview for twenty twenty-four, but I wanted to give you some preliminary numbers as well. This does-not-meet-medical-criteria cost is a financial obligation that we are required to pay. It's basically unreimbursed expenses for hospitalization and treatment. We're one hundred percent responsible for DNMC expenses related to regional treatment center placements. These can exceed two thousand dollars per day for one individual. So it has very significant financial implications for our county.
Do you want to?
Thank you. I might just briefly comment on that. We've honestly done a lot of work in elevating the discussion on mental health gaps in the state. And so I just want to go back to that two thousand dollars per day caveat that he said. We're talking about addressing the PRTF reimbursable rate, eighteen hundred, to the state, to bring those costs up to what, what folks are needing to pay. And we're getting a lot of pushback from DHS and the state legislature on that. But counties and representatives from all over the state are saying, we are already paying that, and then some in regards to what the, the true cost is. So just for the minutes, I want it to be reflected that we're asking for a rate that is lower than some of the cases in which we're paying. Thank you.
So I just want to highlight a few of the partnerships that the adult mental health realm works with. You may or may not have heard of our Becker Clay Otter Tail Wilkin Adult Mental Health Initiative, lovingly referred to as B-COW. If you ever hear that, that's what that stands for. And so we have, through that initiative, monthly meetings, different partnerships that, and collaborations that have developed. We work closely with Bree over at the jail, who is the rap planner over there. And so we work closely with her, especially when we have those individuals that have been referred for civil commitment from Rule Twenty. Sometimes they are over at the jail, and so we connect with her to ensure that we can complete our interview with them and get the most up-to-date information. Again, we work with the River Project over at the jail as well. We sit on several different homeless and housing committees, the FM Coalition and Homelessness, the Carers Governance Board. We just had our first meeting yesterday in a couple of years. And then also the Clay Wilkin Housing Advisory Board. I said earlier that Commissioner Krabnoff is the co-chair of our local advisory council. We meet once a month. There's also participation in the, this is very lengthy, the CAS Clay Threat Assessment Threat Management Team, which is a collaboration with Clay County individuals, CAS County individuals, the FBI, you name it. There's a, there's several committees that, that meet to discuss potential individuals that maybe are on the radar that we just need to work through, and how can we provide services to them. We also work closely with the Sheriff's Office for transports, Mr. Milton and his team, for consults, direction, just any discussions that we need to have when we're looking at civil commitment for individuals. So that makes up our Adult Mental Health Division. So then I'm going to move into our substance use, formerly known as our Chemical Health Division. The state has changed our, the language, so we are trying to change our language. It's not always easy. So there are several individuals. There are two staff that have their LADCs, so they can do our comprehensive assessments. Currently, there are two staff that do civil commitments and treatment coordination. We have recently lost one staff to the Department of Human Services and have hired and will be stealing one of Tiffany's staff, so working on that transition piece. So then we will be fully staffed. And then one case aide who does all of our scheduling of our assessments and the monitoring of referrals for treatment coordination in our specialty courts. So just a couple of numbers here, pretty consistent over the past couple of years of the number of assessments that have been scheduled, the number of assessments that have actually been completed. Just noted that no-shows and cancellations continues to be a trend. We talk about it all the time, that that is really the nature of the individuals that we work with. So it's nothing that our staff is doing or not doing. It's just trying to get the folks in there once the comprehensive assessment has been scheduled. And Cheryl, our case aide, is very good that when someone has no-showed repeatedly, she, she lets them know that there are other agencies within the community that they can go to that do walk-ins every week. We do not do walk-ins. We used to in the past. We have talked about it, but I don't think that would change our cancellation and our no-show rate. So Cheryl is making sure that individuals are aware that there are other agencies that they can go to to get the assessment done. So a little bit about treatment coordination. Again, there's two full-time staff. There's one of the LADCs does part-time treatment coordination, and then Chelsea will be joining us, hopefully within the next couple of months, to start this as well. So we've always provided case management to individuals that have a substance use disorder, but within the last couple of years, we have been able to bill for that, and it's now referred to as treatment coordination. So just a couple of the numbers that aren't on your screen. I just wanted you to know how many clients we have served. Again, this is relatively new that we can bill. So staff is still trying to figure out what that piece looks like. But in twenty twenty-three, there were forty clients that were served. Twenty twenty-four, there were fifty-seven. And noted to date, but that was a couple of weeks ago before I went on vacation, in twenty twenty-five, we have ten that we are currently serving. So treatment coordinators help with housing, employment, scheduling, mental health appointments, addressing any social determinants of health. And an individual is likely to stay engaged in treatment if there is someone that is working with them. So that's, again, we, we've always provided that case management piece. We can continue to do that. Just now we can bill for that, so we can bring in some revenue, which is always a nice thing. And treatment coordination can and reduce reliance on emergency room visits, detox stays, calls to our. calls to our law enforcement agencies. And that just overall then lowers other county costs. So again, it's a positive service that we are able to provide to individuals in Clay County. Just a couple of the different partnerships and committees, again, work very closely with Bree in scheduling those comprehensive assessments over at the jail. Staff participate in our specialty courts, drug court, veterans court, and the newly formed DWI court, which I think is going to be a very positive influence here in Clay County. Participate in the Clay County Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition that Commissioner Krabinoff and Commissioner Ebinger also attend. Again, we collaborate with detox, work very closely with them, ensuring services and programming for individuals that are over at detox. And I can go on and on. There's, you know, we work with our community providers very closely. I don't need to go into all of these things that are on the screen, but we are working closely with the schools now in Clay County. That is something that we have started to do within the last year or two. And working very closely with the Department of Human Services in some of the different meetings that they have. And that just helps us know about anything that's coming down through the state and how that's going to impact services that we provide to our clients. So then moving into adult protection. This is the third piece of the division. Have two staff, wonderful staff, that are very busy. As you can see by some of the numbers, our screen-in reports or screened reports have increased over the last four years. And our screened-in assessments has greatly increased in the last year. And that is just, again, a change from the state. We follow Minnesota statute. And the state has changed our language a little bit and how we actually do our screenings and our intakes through the Vulnerable Adult Act redesign. And so we have moved from a very reactive system to a more proactive system. And that has just changed the number of assessments that we have actually screened in. So again, just a couple of different partnerships that we have through adult protection. We work with CAS County and agencies in Clay County through the Elder Abuse Forensic Network, which is our multidisciplinary team, and also the Coordinated Community Response Coalition. Both of those work, meet monthly. We participate in the FM Hoarding Coalition, our Regional Committee for Adult Protection. We meet quarterly with our DHS representative and then monthly as a regional team. We also collaborate with, very closely with the Moorehead Police Department, Clay County sheriffs, ongoing out and doing some of those assessments. And also with other Clay County law enforcement agencies. We have started to collaborate with the Moorehead Fire Department. They, within the last year, year and a half, have started a new program, the Community Risk Reduction Program. And so we work closely with Mike Miller. And we also collaborate with the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging. So I'm not going to lie, Quinn, I need to change this, move this a little bit because my old eyes have a hard time reading these very small words that are now on the screen. So some of the challenges, and I'm not going to take up a lot of your time because I could talk all day, probably into tomorrow, about some of the challenges that staff face. But one of them is just the continued shortage of our state-operated beds. You all have heard that. You're going to continue to hear that. I do not foresee that getting any better. That is at all levels, at our community behavioral health hospitals, at Anoka, and our forensic services. And as a result of that, individuals who are committed, if they're in the jail, they're not able to be placed in the state-operated system because the folks that are in that system, there's not enough beds in the community to move them on. So it's just this backlog everywhere. And that is what we see. And that then leads into what Quinn was talking about, our DNMC cost. Once they're determined no longer needing that level of care, we are notified and we have to foot that bill. And sometimes we are able to find placement. Sometimes it takes a little while. And that's why that cost has increased. We also are seeing in the last several months is that folks are being discharged, in our opinion, too quickly from state-operated services. And that's due to there is this chronic waitlist at those beds. They need to get people moved out. We understand that. But what we're seeing then is folks are being discharged when we don't think they're ready to be placed back in the community. And then that causes a huge burden on our providers in the community and the services that we can actually provide to them. They're provisionally discharged too soon. And we've also started to see that state facilities are now refusing to accept our folks because they may be too chronic. So that's been something new. Again, that's the population that we work with. So it's quite frustrating for staff. So like I said, continued shortage of our providers, folks being discharged too quickly. We're seeing some of the barriers, being language barriers, legal status, and then that's going to be pretty big moving forward as well. Having to, we've had clients that have lost their paperwork. So until we can prove their status or obtain replacement documentations, they're not eligible for insurance, which makes them not eligible for the waiver, which makes them not eligible for our community-based programs. So huge barrier. Again, increased serving of individuals from different cultural backgrounds, language barriers, citizenship status. We have added increase in cost for our interpretive services. We have a couple of agencies that have been great to work with us, but it is an increased cost that we haven't had in our budget for this before. Barriers with being a border state. It can be good, it can be bad, but there are definitely barriers. We have to determine residency for civil commitment, for our substance use services, and also when we're doing adult protection assessments. For all of those, we have to make sure that they are not only a Minnesota resident, but a Clay County resident. And obtaining, especially when a person is homeless or cannot prove where they have been staying, that can impact how quickly services can be established for them. And also just obtaining information from North Dakota that, yes, they're getting benefits over here. No, they're not getting benefits over here. That can be very lengthy in trying to obtain some of that. And then just lastly, in our substance use disorder unit, just the fentanyl and opioid epidemic that you all are aware of as well. And again, trying to determine which state they may reside in, where they're getting benefits, so we can best serve them. But I do want to end on a positive note that through direct access, which the state of Minnesota implemented for substance use disorders a couple of years ago, direct access has been a huge benefit for folks before they had to come to the county to get their assessment. Our waitlist could be long depending on how many referrals we were getting. And now an individual can choose where they want to go for an assessment, where they want to go for placement. We do not have to be the placing agent, which has reduced and hopefully will continue to reduce some of those wait times for individuals trying to access services. I think that's it.
All right, Quinn, before you move on, I think maybe if we have comments or questions regarding Kirstens. And I just want to start off by saying, you know, we just talked about the, and had a resolution regarding our child abuse and those. But we also have the frustration levels that we deal with in behavioral health for adults, mental illness. Clay County, I think it's a credit to all of you that I think we're looked at across the state. And I think Commissioner Mojul can testify to that fact that when we're down in St. Paul, we always seem to be a beacon light, so to speak, in terms of the efforts that we put in to mental health issues in Clay County. And we are a leader in the state. And that's a credit to you and your group in doing that. And, you know, even though I sensed the frustration out of you today on behalf of all of your team that works on this. And, but the good news, from our standpoint back to you, is that they should take credit for the good work that they're doing, even though it's not to the level they wish they could reach. So, thank you. So Commissioner Krabinoff.
Yeah, just echoing off what you were saying, all the things, the services that you provide in so many complex areas that we see all the time. I just want to refer back to a few of the groups I've worked with, the ALACs, whether it's adults or children. I just also, well, thank you to our staff and the commitment they have. But I also want to say a thank you to our community providers that certainly are part of this bigger picture. And I think we're lucky to that. We live in a community that we have so many, along with our hospitals and other treatment facilities. We're very fortunate. It could be more challenging than it is. But I do see a lot of commitment and investment toward these issues that are unfortunately continuing to grow. But I personally feel you're keeping pace as the very best you can. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would want to just join, I think, what Commissioner Krabinoff said. And I think all the team that's up here, we, as the county attorneys, obviously get an opportunity to work with all of them. I personally get to work a lot with Kirsten and her team. You know, the mental health area is a very important area. I think that the board has very much worked to keep pace with a lot of the issues that are out there. We do see a lot of it. And I just would echo what Kirsten said. You know, even as we see, you know, some numbers temporary wane for a little while, it doesn't feel like it. There's a lot going on there. A lot of those numbers represent two, three, four, five court hearings, as well as numerous, you know, other matters that they're coordinating each day to help move individuals, you know, say, from Clay County to the AMRCC or to St. Peter, if it is. And, you know, a lot of pretty important hearings where we're doing things like intrusive medication, you know, forced medications on individuals that don't accept or don't realize that they're ill and mentally ill and could be a danger to themselves or could be a danger to the public. And so it is important work that her team does and all the teams up here. We do a lot of work. And I know they're going to talk about even other areas, but I know Kirsten's done a lot of good things. And it is one of those areas that it can be some of the most rewarding areas, but some of those frustrating at times, too. So I want to thank her.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
I didn't put a slide up for this, and Kirsten doesn't know, but kudos to Kirsten for supervising three separate program areas.
Yes.
When I think back to my previous role and how much I needed to know for one program area, I'm actually pretty astounded when you come up here and present such detailed information on three separate program areas. So I just wanted to highlight that to all of you, that Kirsten's an expert in three areas, not just one.
One thing before we move on, Quinn, just real briefly. And I think it would be worthy of discussions at another date and time to dig into more about the lack of what we might be receiving at the state level. I think that would be, I think that would be a good conversation for us to openly have here in a little bit more detail about where things might be falling short and how we, as commissioners, can help advocate. I'm sure that you probably are doing things through AMC, through, you know, your Department of Human Services and so on and so forth. But we need to be more involved with that. So at some point in time, maybe arrange with Stephen. Let's get more involved in that discussion.
Glad you brought that up. I've got a packet on my desk for something called an ERTS facility, an intensive residential treatment services facility. Think of PRTF for adults. That's essentially what we're talking about. It's my understanding that Rhonda kind of started.
Well, we have a little bit something on that and on a back burner right now with all the other things we've got going. And that, you know, that we probably have room to expand on in the future. But let's have that conversation. But we better, we've got some others that are anxious to speak here, I can tell.
So with that, I'll kick it over to Amy, Michelle, and Tiffany, who supervise our Child Protection Division.
Yes, good morning. Thanks for having us. So in our Child Protection Division, we have three supervisors. So we have 32 staff total that are in our division. Tiffany supervises our assessment and intake. So she has, she's responsible, her team is responsible for assessing those initial reports. Amy and I, between Amy and I, we supervise 14 case managers, four case aides. And so essentially, when a report comes in for a child abuse or neglect, Tiff's team will screen it. If they screen it in, if it meets criteria, they'll conduct an assessment. After that assessment, they'll make a determination whether services are needed or not. If services are needed, we can work with those families voluntarily. Sometimes we need to consult with our county attorney's office and have those services court-ordered. Sometimes cases can, children will remain in the home. Sometimes they have to be court-ordered out of the home due to safety concerns. So we do multiple things. We work with families really closely, assess for services, and refer for services is the big thing that we do for our case management. We also supervise children's mental health services. So we contract out our Rule 79 case management and manage a lot of other service providers that we work with to be able to provide those services to the families that we work with, too.
So I'm going to jump into talking about some data here. But before I do, I just want to say thank you for being able to be here with everybody today. Obviously, this is my first meeting where I've got to sit in front of all of you. I took over Quinn's position when he took the director. I spent all of my career in child protection. So my heart is really with this unit, and I'm glad I get to lead them. In 2024, Michelle kind of talked about our intakes. So in 2024, we took a total of 2,364 intakes. That's about 175 up from the year prior. That includes child protection intakes, any voluntary reports we get. Records requests are also included in that. So the number does look quite high. However, the total CP intakes, the cases that we would have worked that were child protection cases, or that intakes that would have came in, were 1,595, which is 200 down from the year prior. And then of those 1,595 cases, we opened a total of 305, which is 11 up from 2023. Continuing on with some data, specifically, we screen our reports by allegations. So the state mandates certain allegations meet certain criteria for us to work. My eyes are a little blind, too, so I'm going to have to really look here. Our highest percentage of cases in 2024 were neglect cases. For our neglect cases, that includes educational neglect, medical neglect, supervision, substance abuse. And our prenatal exposure cases, which we do some crossover work with Kirsten's unit in those cases as well. Our highest percentage was 18%. That's with our pregnant and using parents that we try to partner with to offer support to ensure that they don't end up in our system once baby is born. From there, our next highest was physical abuse, with 22% of our reports being specific for physical abuse. Next was threatened injury at 15%. Sexual abuse came in at 13%. And then medical neglect, we saw it 2% as well as mental, excuse me, mental injury at 5%.
Good morning, everyone. Just continuing on into our 2024 data for out-of-home placements. In 2023, we had 176 unduplicated children in out-of-home placement, which was down nine from the previous year. This does include all of our probation cases, voluntary children's mental health cases, and then our mandated child protection cases. So the net cost to the county in terms of out-of-home placements was approximately $3.1 million, which was up $220,000 from 2023. million, which was up $220,000 from 2023. Some factors that we feel plays into that is just inflationary costs of care, higher daily rates, higher per diems. We oftentimes have to place a lot of our older youth over at the juvenile center, which is a higher rate of care versus a foster home. We've had longer stays of cares for older youth with significant mental health and behavioral issues who've been in placement longer than, say, a large sibling group who's in a shorter-term placement in just your standard foster home. We also, which is exciting, have placed a lot more children over the last year with relatives. However, when you go to a grandpa and grandma and say, here's four kids, and they're still working, we have a lot of support to offer them, or in terms of daycare startup costs and paying deposits and helping those relatives become licensed and be able to be the providers for those kids. The primary location of children in placement remains in non-relative foster care homes, so our county licensed homes or our therapeutic foster homes. And then our second and third area where most of our kids are placed are either at the West Central Regional Juvenile Center, just in terms of kids with significant mental health and behavioral issues, and lack of foster homes for kids over the age of 13. We just don't have as many foster homes as we need for those kids, so they're not there based on what they have done, it's because we don't have foster homes for that level, or for those age of children. And then our third highest is relative foster homes, so we're Tiffany's unit and our unit are out there, meeting with those families, meeting with relatives, finding grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, to try to place those kids with family, which is very important. In terms of our state and federal measurements, this is pretty exciting. We have been, over the last few years, on a performance improvement plan with the Department of Human Services for kids not being placed timely with relatives. And this year, we met that goal, almost double, so it is exciting. 68.6% in 2024, we met that standard. So that means we were out there asking about family, asking about relatives, getting those kids in, taking any barriers away from those grandparents or aunts and uncles, and getting those kids placed with family. In terms of our monthly face-to-face caseworker visits, we also met this performance standard at 97.5% in 2024. That means those social workers were getting out and seeing those kids in their foster homes, in their placement facilities, every month, face-to-face, making sure that those kids are receiving the services they need, that they're safe, that they're meeting all the requirements of their out-of-home placement plan. So those social workers were going out to homes, to foster homes, and out to all over the state. As many of you know, we have a lot of kids placed down in Austin, Minnesota, we have kids placed in Duluth, Grand Rapids, so they were going out and meeting those kids where they're at.
Okay, I'm just going to finish off with the last state and federal measurements we have, so timelines to our initial contact. This happens on the front end in the assessment unit, where we receive the reports and we're required to make either contact with the child within 24 hours or 120 hours. The performance standard for that is 100%. As you can see, our agency came in at 91.2%, which means of the 319 kids our assessment unit was responsible to see, they saw 291 of those children within timelines. I think it's important to note, some of the barriers that our workers run into is law enforcement. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to wait for criminal investigations, getting interviews set up, transportation, sometimes it's just halted because we're waiting for the appropriate services to be in place, so we're only interviewing kids one time versus re-interviewing them over and over. The last one is maltria memory occurrence, which is where we investigate a case for abuse or neglect, and then we determine that something occurred, and we offer the appropriate services. The state standard for that is 9.1% or less. We have come in at 0%. We've never missed this, this would mean that we've never had to reassess an act of abuse or neglect against a child. We've met this standard almost every single year, at least since I've been at the county, so that's huge for our team.
So child protection is often reactionary, but we are able to provide some prevention services, and so we really focus on that when we can. One of the things that we've, we receive the parental support outreach program, so we contract with the village to provide that service. That service is for those screened-out intake reports that we refer to them, and their providers will go out and reach those families and try to offer services. The whole point is to try to prevent them from coming into our child protection system. So that's a really important program that we have. Another one is family group decision-making. We have a grant that we receive, we receive money to provide these meetings for our families to really be in the driver's seat of their plans, so we've had a lot of good outcomes with that, so that's a really good service that we're able to offer. The other thing that we, we often, we often offer financial assistance as well, we have some flex, flex funds that is in our budget, that we can often use some of those funds just to help meet some of those immediate needs to keep kids in their home. So I think that's an important thing to note, too. We did have all of our staff attend the family resource training last year, it was a lot of training, it was a very involved thing, and so looking forward to that partnership in the future. The other thing I want to mention, too, is we still, we have, in our county contract, we had the CIBS program through LSS, and mentioned that here before, that, we had a grant for that, that's gone, but the county has put money into that, and that's been a really important service to try to keep kids in their home who are facing really significant mental health needs, and we've had a lot of success. Part of the issue is, we don't have a lot of capacity for it, so.
So just some updates in child protection that are coming over the next year, for sure, is the upcoming legislative changes to include the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation Act, known as MIFPA, or MAFPA, excuse me. So this will require social services agencies to provide active efforts to African-American families, similar to the Indian Child Welfare Act. This may have fiscal implications, which Quinn will speak to a little bit more, and this law will expand statewide January 1st, 2027. We also have some new requirements in terms of our billing for motivational interviewing requirements of staff, so we have all of our staff participate in motivational interviewing, and this will be part of our FORE claiming. The SARB, which is the Student Attendance Review Board, which we'll go into a little more detail, I'm just hitting the highlights here, but, which is an exciting kind of new program that we're working with our community partners to look at truancy in our community. And then legislative, legislative proposal to amend our response to truant children.
I just wanted to touch briefly on the MAFPA fiscal implications. Recently, I needed to complete a Legislative Budget Office survey for kind of what Clay County's estimated costs would be. Now, I provided that to Steve, and he shared a little bit of that information with you. In order to do this right, in order to do it the way that the state wants it done, similar to the way that ICWA and MIFPA is implemented, we would need to bring on about four full-time staff, including one supervisor. So it has very significant financial implications, ranging anywhere between $460,000 and $473,000, depending on the different implementation requirements that the state has yet to be clear or figure, figure out. The reality is, is I don't know if that's doable, so we're going to do the work regardless of if funding comes in from the state to help support the implementation of this law or not. The one thing that I'm very confident in is our supervisors and the staff that do the job. So we will figure it out one way or another, but I just want, I thought it would be very important for you to know, that's a very significant impact to the county.
Yes.
Is, at this point, none of the funding has come through for that, has it?
No. I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, my understanding was it had, and none of it's recoverable anywhere else. I mean, if the state doesn't do it, it's going to have to come out of the counties.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I also would note, in addition to the four social workers that Quinn spoke about, there would also be an impact on Mr. Milton's department that also would very likely lead to a need for Mr. Milton to ask for additional staff to help, help with this process.
So we'll talk about a little revenue capture that we can have. So we have had all of our staff go through a motivational interviewing training, that's a requirement through our FFPSA, for us to be able to claim down those funds. So those workers need to be certified in MI. The training was very intense. We had a lot of great feedback that, you know, when you tell staff that you have to go to four days of training and record yourself and upload it to the computer to be tested, you get a little pushback, but quite frankly, after the first day, everybody was really motivated and felt like it was one of the best trainings that they've had, right, Amy? Anyway, yeah. So once, once we have our staff certified, they'll be able, will it be able to pull down those funds? Part of becoming certified, though, is having to do quarterly reviews, so we have to have a certified staff, which would be myself, and maybe a couple others, too, that will have to meet with our workers quarterly, they'll have to upload a video and send it to the state. So when you ask really busy child protection workers to do these additional things, it can cause some stress, but I think people really see the benefit to being trained in MI and using it with our families, so I think it'll be a good thing.
Moving on to more positive things, our SARB board, which Amy brought up earlier. So luckily, this year, we had the opportunity to partner with, partner with Morehead Public Schools, as well as the county attorney's office for the SARB board. The Morehead Public Schools got some grant funding to pilot a program. Right now, Michelle and I have each one staff member that are piloting this program with the Morehead Public Schools. Basically, this program is set up to help alleviate some of the truancy concerns that come through our system and limit the amount of court petitions that are getting filed through the court. So we have two workers that meet bi-weekly with a select group of ninth-grade students at Morehead Public High every two weeks, and then report to this board to try to improve attendance, hook them up with services, just be peer supports for them. Our hope is, approaching the end of the year here, we're kind of running out of time to fully see what this pilot looks like, our hope is we can start it again next year, include more students, have more workers pilot the program, so that we can see a decrease in those educational neglect reports that we're seeing so, so high numbers of right now, as well as our truancy reports, too.
So on to some challenges in our child protection that we're seeing. You know, I, I feel like we sound like a broken record, and, but I'll say it again, we do have a lack of provider for in-home workers, for those intensive in-home family skills that are so needed to keep families in their home. Providers, you know, we talked to our contracted providers, and they're having difficulty finding people who want to do that work. And so that's really where that lies, and so it's just such a critical service that we're seeing a lack of. I will say, our contracted providers do a great job of getting cases assigned and working with those families. They do prioritize working with us, but then we'll see, you know, some families who are maybe on the fridge that are waiting a year for some of the similar services. So it, you know, the impacts are, are significant as far as that goes. Again, facing a lack of resources regarding our kiddos who are looking for residential treatment centers, you are all very well aware of that, but it's something that we continue to see a struggle with.
We're also continuing to see the, see a need for more foster care homes available to take children 13 and older. It's been a barrier for quite a few years and continues to be a barrier. And then lack of affordable housing remains a barrier to the families that we serve. We see a lot of homeless families that can't get into housing, whether they have history or can't find affordable housing, so this continues to be a main barrier.
To continue to play off of that, lack of affordable childcare, especially for infants, a lot of our foster home placements want to take infants, but unfortunately, we have an inability to lack, to find the appropriate childcare for those settings as well. Quinn is going to talk a little bit more about this, but also in 2026, their 13 and under children will no longer be able to be charged with delinquency matters, which potentially will have an impact as well.
Yeah, if you remember James, James's departmental update, he spoke briefly to this as well, but what this does, it effectively shifts responsibility from the juvenile justice system, the child protection system, and social services. James's math adds up, it's about a 5% increase that, that we think we're going to see of kiddos that ultimately end up being placed at the juvenile center, again, correspondingly with the higher payment costs that, that Amy spoke about it.
That's part of the plan in Non-Secure, right?
Correct, yes. James has seen this coming with this legislation and kind of built that in for what he expects his capacity to need to be in order to kind of account for this. Again, it's, it's going to take up bed space for the kiddos that we need it for, that historically, we haven't had to use this as a, as an option, and it's going to, it's going to drive up the caseloads for our child protection staff. These will fall under what are called child welfare responses, but they're still going to end up being families that we serve, and it's going to drive up those caseloads. I just wanted to speak to that as well, and it likely will have a financial implication for us also.
When, when we refer to the need for more foster care homes for, for older children, where, where are they going now?
Mainly West Central, mainly the juveniles.
So there, that has a significant daily price tag to it.
Correct.
So, like we've did in the past, we tried to do, offer some incentives for, on the childcare side of things. Is there anything from an incentive thing that we should be looking at that could maybe bring in more potential foster care? As opposed, you know, I mean, it, an investment in one way might be much more feasible than the alternative of the higher cost of West Central.
I think we are doing some more specialized, trying to do specialized recruitment for older foster homes, and then also really trying to work with the relatives to see what barriers they might have to be in options for these kids, and trying to offer, if we need to, whatever it might take to help get them in a place to be licensed for those older youths so we can transition. But oftentimes, if we do find placements that are non-relative, then they're out of the community, and then you're pulling a teenager who's gone to Morehead High School out of his high school that he's known for all. So it's, it's a really challenging, complicated kind of challenge, but we keep continuing to try to be creative, and how can we keep these kiddos in their community with family or out of the juvenile center, too?
I'll, I'll speak to this a little, too. We've really worked hard on our respite care, with our respite care grant, to really try to increase the utilization of our foster care homes. And so we've worked really closely with Gail, and, and when we've been going out and meeting with our Rule 79 providers, and really talking about these older kids, and hoping that if maybe some of our, our foster care homes would be willing to provide respite for some of these older kids, they'll see that, oh, I could maybe have them in my home full-time, too. So we've seen some movement in that area since we've been doing that outreach, so maybe some of those grassroots efforts, and, and really, it's just as simple as talking about the strengths and really building those up, and of course, you have to talk about the, the difficulties that some of these kids have, too, but just in the way that message is relayed, sometimes we'll get people to the door.
For people who might be watching this or watching a replay of this, explain respite.
So respite care is, is a service that we provide to families that, that gives children and families a break from each other. So kids might go there from one day to a weekend, and it's really just to...
We have a commissioner just...
Can I send my kids?
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, so it's, it's really built in to give everybody a break, and the idea is that, you know, when you're, you're faced with some really difficult and challenging behaviors, but for everybody in the family, that getting that break will help them maintain in their home.
And some of our families don't have those outside supports, they don't have grandpas or grandmas or aunts and uncles in the community who can take care of those kids for a quick weekend break to give those parents some room, so.
Building those supports.
So, so part of an, part of a deal could be that, you know, maybe looking at somebody who maybe wouldn't have to take care of these people on a regular basis, but, you know, a fill-in type of a deal, right? That's, and, and we're lacking in that area.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if the public is really aware that that's, there's a need for that, it's not like it's, this is a full-time commitment type of a thing either, you know, so I, I think that's important to note.
Yeah.
One question on, yes, foster care. Is there a lot of red tape to become a foster parent from the state, that you have to jump through a bunch of hoops to become that, or?
Significant paperwork.
Yep, lots of paperwork to go with that.
Training, background checks.
Correct, and we can have Jessica speak to that when we come next week, for Jessica's in the licensing division. As Amy and Michelle were talking about, we do everything we can to eliminate those barriers. Oh, you don't have a specific type of fire extinguisher that the state, well, we're going to buy that, and we're going to give it to you. That seems like a silly reason to not be able to provide care for your relative or for this teenager that needs it. So if there are those easy, I would say, low-hanging fruit barriers, we've, we've installed windows before, like, they don't have a specific window in a room that needs to have two exits, and you only have one, well, if a $600 to $700 window is... you only have one, well, if a $600 to $700 window is that barrier, we'll figure out a way to make that work so that we can get that good quality caregiver for the adolescent.
So, then, just some exciting child protection successes in 2024. In terms of adoption, after 897 days in placement, a six-child sibling group were adopted together by a relative. So, that was probably one of, one of the most exciting days we had. After 1,635 days in placement, a child was adopted by a kinship caregiver, which is a significant relationship to that child. So, we also had a sibling group of six who were reunified with their parent. They were in placement with a grandparent and ended up being reunified with their parents. So, all very exciting. In 2024, we established permanency for 32 children, meaning either they were adopted or there was a transfer of permanent physical and legal custody, whether it's to a relative or a kinship giver, a caregiver. We are actively participating in the SAR pilot program with hopes to expand in the future. So, really partnering with all our community partners, the schools, probation, the county attorney's office, trying to work on creative ways to address the truancy issue in our community. And then, we restructured our child protection team to collaborate with more community partners, bringing in those community partners, seeing how we can rock around these families and get them the services they need, trying to prevent out-of-home placements. So, any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for including the successes. You know, I just can't think about the amount of time that has passed for some of those kiddos, the amount of different folks that they worked with to get to that point, I think is the, the point that sometimes goes unknown. And so, I really appreciate the work that you all do, your teams do. It's critically important, vitally important. I, no, you can't say this, but I'm going to. The irony of DHS putting Clay County on a improvement plan, when we are begging at the Capitol to have leniency in some of the mandated components that we're dealing with. Counties are doing the best they can to meet the needs of the citizens that we're working with, and sometimes those mandates get in the way of providing amazing care. And so, thank you for being part of telling that story. I'm urging you to help us tell it louder, and so, in any way that you can share those stories, I do want to hear the elongated version of the frustrations because that's how we bang that door down, for lack of a better term. I will also comment on what Commissioner Campbell said. We are a beacon in the state as to how we are thinking critically about giving, supplying care in a way that's multifaceted. It's meeting people where they need to be met, oftentimes outside of the box, and that's really hard to, for folks to understand sometimes, but you're doing a phenomenal job with the limited resources that I know you all have, so thank you for that. And I will say that these are stories that, you know, we get criticized a lot for how large the social service budget is, and I appreciate you bringing forth why we're doing the work, how we're preventing a cycle of, you know, a trouble, if you will, trying to get kids out of really horrific situations and getting adults the care that they need. In a state that wants to talk about how well we treat citizens, there's huge, huge gaps in care that's available, in beds that are available, and how sometimes it's really easy to say, oh, well, we got the person the care that they needed, and we're going to kick them on out with no supports in a structure that's vitally broken. So, I'm going to get off this soapbox for the sake of our, our schedule, but thank you.
You know, we, we up here don't get to see the faces or the names of the people that you work with. I just find it amazing to hear this six, this group of six siblings were adopted by a family member. I think that's just amazing, and it's just too bad that we're not allowed to put a name and a face to that here at this level. So, whoever that person is, thank you very much, and hopefully, we can see more of those types of things happen, so. Yes, Commissioner Eber.
I try not to go backwards too much, but I worked in a system that was broken, and we worked at huge expense. Us and the prosecuting attorney's office worked at huge expense to try and shuffle the problem and try and litigate the problem. And it just gratifies me, and it has since I came here in 2006. Understand what the fight you guys are fighting, and it's got to be frustrating, but you're doing such a better job than most communities do. And we need to support this. And Commissioner Mojo is right, we hear a lot of static about the cost of your, your operation. Trust me, there's a cost to not having the kind of people you've got. And as a state attempts to shift, you know, the costs on the county, we've got to fight that, but we also have to support what you're doing out there, and we understand that. And again, the story, six kids, just your highlights you hit. I come from a place where there aren't any of those stories, where success is considered. We sent somebody to jail. We got that little kid that's gang-banging because nothing has been available to him all his life. We got him sent off to juvie. When West Central is the worst-case scenario that we deal with, and that's a wonderful place, sure, you don't want to send kids there when they can be in a family, but there, I don't think we throw anybody away in this community, and you guys are a huge part of that, so thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for being here and giving us your updates today. Steve, do you want to take the item number four? I understand that our presenter had a conflict.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Strowman sends his apologies. He ended up getting pulled into a meeting prior to heading over here this morning, and so the resolution before you this morning is a partnership that's been gone, gone on many years with Clay County and the Snowmobile Clay County Trail Alliance. And we act as the legal sponsor through the DNR for funding for the grooming of the trails that they provide in, in Clay County. And so, they also act as our, through this resolution, they also act as our liaison of working with, working with our landowners in Clay County to have permission to utilize the right of way or, in certain cases, parts of their land for the trail to go through. And so, they're required to maintain, maintain that documentation and ongoing conversations with our citizens through an audit process through the DNR. And so, our request here today is through Resolution 2025-13 would be to continue that acting as the legal sponsor. I would also, this would also provide an opportunity for, for myself when documentation comes as part of this grant that this board allows me to sign on this board's behalf for the upcoming calendar year. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions?
I have one question.
Okay, Commissioner Bear.
Does this have to be dealt with today to get in for grant, or?
It doesn't, but I've dealt, I've done this before on my own, just based on Greg's, Greg's schedule, it's sometimes hard for him to get here. And so, it doesn't have to be done, done today. I mean, it could, it could still be done today, and if you wanted to invite Greg in to provide an update for, on the last, on the last year's snowmobile season, we could certainly invite him back.
Well, I, you know, I think we can act on this today, and if we want to get an update from him on activities, you know, maybe, maybe a fall would be a better time we're going into a, I guess we are going into our snow.
Yeah. Oh, wow.
So, anyway, I guess I would just as soon as act on it now and move forward, so. Any questions? Commissioner Eber.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-13 for Clay County to act as legal sponsor for DNR funding for the Snowmobile Trail Management by Clay Trail Alliance.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eber, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right, and then that leaves us with our committee reports. I know that Commissioner Kravenoff had to leave for an appointment, so Commissioner Mojo, would you like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, I've been at the Capitol a lot to advance the agenda that the board has put forth, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Happy to report, we've been successful to acquire a number of hearings for both our PRTF nonsecure facility and flood mitigation. I also had the opportunity to partake with the water, water district creation conversations. We've met with over 20 legislators on both the Senate and House side, met with both chairs of multiple committees, vice chairs of multiple committees, and as we all saw last week with the House and Senate proposed budget components, there's a lot of gap in regards to what we're seeing and needing locally and what is left to pay for those components. Last week, we had the capital, or capital investment hearing for the nonsecure facility. I just want to thank James for attending with that. It was really helpful to have his insight, and I think it goes to not only the presentation that we just had, but many of our departments who, when we ask to help discuss and explain the needs statewide, not only do they say, we'll do whatever it takes, but they'll say, how can we be there to help? So, I really appreciate that. Last week, I also attended the compliance committee kickoff meeting that was held. I was able to attend virtually. Rory's brought that group together just to make sure that we're working on the IT components with all of our departments to be not only in compliance, but also making sure that we're taking the threats, cybersecurity threats into account. So, I appreciate being included in that group. I attended the land management for the FM diversion authority meeting, talked about the Horace land component. That one's tricky, there's so many different nuances to that, but heard from a lot of residents making sure that they had the opportunity to bid on that as well. So, that was recommended to the full board. The next day, I attended the MCC JPA meeting. We had a land parcel that we dealt with on the Wilken County line. There was a recommendation for action on that. And then, last week, I also had the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We were discussing planning and the presentation to this full board on what MetroCog would, or what we would like to hear from MetroCog, so I appreciate bringing it, being brought in on that piece. And then, Friday, I attended the AMC Board of Directors meeting in, in Nisswa. Really, it's, it's hard to get a good, accurate beat on all of the different issues that are affecting us locally, not only from the federal government, but the, the state budget outlooks. We talked for a long time on Medicaid, that federal reconciliation status, what our stance is on that, how we will implement something locally, what the proposed changes will mean to budgets. There's a lot of high, high-level issues that are going on that have dire implications to local budgets, so I appreciate being part of that discussion. And then, I also attended a meeting with the City of Morehead, Chamber of Commerce, and Clay County in regards to flood mitigation strategy for legislation. I'm going to go back on a comment that I said earlier in March. The projects in Minnesota are vitally important and required for all of the permits and settlements that have been signed. I will fiercely defend that those projects need to be completed in a timely manner, and I will also say that I don't think, if we had an unprecedented flood today, there are components on the North Dakota side that would allow some sort of operation of that channel, and unless the Minnesota components are done, nothing can be operated through that channel in my point of view. And so, I'm hopeful that those of us that are around all of those tables will continue to advocate that position forward. I understand that there might be delays for funding. I understand that there might be timelines that need to be consolidated or pushed out, but those projects must be completed. That was the promise that we gave settlement agreement component, or people downstream and upstream people. Those understandings were in play as we've moved forward with eminent domain and land purchase agreements. They must be done. So, I appreciate being part of the collaboration and how we think critically and advocate those needs forward. I'm hopeful that we're able to get Governor Walz and Governor Armstrong together to revisit what the governor's task force proposals and agreements were, so I'm hopeful that we can do that. It looks like we're looking at a date, maybe a week and a half, two weeks out. So, that's all I have on that piece. And then, also attended a meeting with Senator Kupac that morning with social service staff, juvenile detention staff, Steve, and Commissioner Kravenoff, in how we work forward in advancing those legislative priorities and discussion components forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bear.
On Wednesday, March 26, I went to the Historical Cultural Society of Clay County, where we discussed hiring a new executive director. The longtime one is retiring, and they've had 100 applicants, which they weeded down to 15, and they're going to start interviews. They also discussed renewing their line of credit there in case of an emergency, which they did that. And that's pretty much all that was discussed there. And then, yesterday, I went to the West Central Regional Water District meeting up in Halsted, where we discussed an MOU with Felton to receive their $1.75 million grant, so we can bring that into the water district, and we'll be having a meeting with City of Felton next Monday. We also had an update from the operator of the East Central Regional Water District from North Dakota, giving us an update on where all their water comes from, because that'll be the first water we would be receiving, purchasing from for the district to come from North Dakota to feed the Halsted line. We also discussed the budget, and we're sitting pretty well right now with all three counties bringing in a few more funds. And I'd like to thank Jenny for being part of those meetings down there in St. Paul. And with that, that was all that I had for the last week.
Thank you. Commissioner Eber.
It's last Tuesday, after our commission meeting, we had Kim Savage bring a Recorder's Office compliance report. Everything looks in order, and that information will be brought before the commission at some upcoming date. Then, later that day, I had the Red River Regional Dispatch Center meeting. Had general business, and really, I think the only thing that stood out on the dispatch center facility update, there were some upgrade, updated costs, $423,000, almost $424,000 allocated for consoles that needed to be increased, $16,000 for wireless access points within the building, and then additional power outlets, redundancies to the consoles of almost $18,000. All of those were passed. There was a $672 credit for a coiling door that is still being contested. It seems like every new facility has got door problems. It seems like every new facility has got door problems. That pretty much completes that report. On Wednesday, the 26th, I attended the Greater Fargo, Morehead, EDC Executive Board meeting. Covered some of the projects, or some of the programs that are currently underway with company culture discussions and workforce recruitment. Innovate 28 was a point of discussion. Mr. Joe Raso talked about some of the data that he's provided for both sides of the river to the Chamber of Commerce to help with legislative issues. They discussed the matching funds that the Innovate 28 fund generates from the state of North Dakota through Cass County. And they, they continue to try and find private sector investors in this, and that was a point of discussion. Cass County members indicated they wanted to know why some businesses were not joining, or, and Mr. Raso indicated a lot of it was comfort with traditional investments. They were, had made donate, donations to the EDC, and they didn't want to donate to Innovate 28. They wanted to continue to donate to the EDC, and they didn't have a relationship with the Chamber, which I find kind of ironic. I think we have a relationship with the Chamber, and our donation still went to the EDC so that they get the North Dakota match. But there was a request at, from Cass County, that they want to see what the return on their investment is from the Innovate 28 program, and that is an issue to come. Later that day, I went to the drug court graduation. They were running quite a bit late because they were doing staffing, they were bringing some of the participants up and having them report in. So, I missed about half of the graduation itself, but I just want to say, that is a remarkable program right now. And haven't heard what we did this morning, particularly from Kirsten. It was really great to see some people that have got some huge issues, and they're coming back in, and this court's assisting them in getting turned around. There was a woman who was reunited with four of her kids that were in foster care, because she's clean and sober, and she's taken the steps, and the, the drug court was there to help her stay on path. So, I wished I could have stayed for the entire thing, but I had a meeting following up later that day at the Diversion Authority Finance Committee. And I attended, as the alternate, but I attended because we had Minnesota funding updates in the agenda. I'll get to that in a minute. We had the usual business and MOU and agreements that we discussed, some budget reports. But when we got to the, the Minnesota funding and the, the projects we have over here, I was quite happy. Jason Benson and Tony Grinberg both acknowledged the efforts that Commissioner Mojo and the Minnesota people are making in the legislative initiatives, initiatives that we got. And I think that sat some of the concerns we've heard. I think they got some peace, peace of mind through that, knowing that these extraordinary efforts are being made to get these critical projects funded. And I don't think we could, I don't think, and, and again, I'll throw thank you to our staff and to the people that have been up there, and to Commissioner Mojo, for the real efforts that they put into this. Executive Director Benson pointed that out. Commissioner Grinberg nodded when it was said, which, this is, this is a good position to be in right now. We just need the funding, and we need the two governors to sit down and look at the commitments that were made on, on behalf of the state of Minnesota and North Dakota by their predecessors. So, hopefully, that's going to happen. Following day, I attended the, the Diversion Authority Board meeting. Again, a lot of it was repetition of regular business issues we had. We did find, there has been a break on the Technical Dispute Review Board, and Chris Kane, who's both an attorney and a public engineer, has agreed to serve on that. As you know, we had problems with the old resolution team, because they are being forced to have an open meeting over North Dakota through the Drew Wrigley, the Attorney General's ruling on it. It looks like they've got a team of people put together that are willing to work in an open meeting environment. Ironically enough, they're all engineers and lawyers. As lawyers, I think they're probably a little more open to public scrutiny, and that process is proceeding on the, the issues that we have under consideration right now. Again, Executive Director Benson made reference to House, House File 2224 and the work that's going on there. We also talked, a contract was established with H&amp;H Modeling for FEMA certification presentation. That's going to help get, get the mapping done so that the flood insurance can be addressed by FEMA in a timely manner. And again, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, as long as these projects that are necessary for certification can be completed in a timely manner. And that, oh, later that day, at a Lake Agony, at Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board meeting, a major issue under contention there was establishing a monthly rent for Lake Agassiz. Will be occupying 9% of the new community center library. And we had two proposals, and we agreed to have a, a executive subcommittee put together, I'm on it, along with Barry Nelson from Becker County and Steve Jacobson from Norman County, and we will be engaging in the negotiations with the City of Morehead for a library lease. We have a quarter million dollar set aside for FFNE. As soon as we have a lease, we'll be able to discuss that with them. They've given us a couple of options. We're going to meet, and then we will meet with them and continue to work towards getting a lease that's affordable. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo, do you have a couple additions?
Thank you. I appreciate your perspective on that Lake Agassiz and City of Morehead lease. I think those discussions will be helpful as we look over square footage occupied in regards to what rent should be for projects. Last week, I attended the HR Committee of the Lakes and Prairies Community Action. We did have a opportunity to review the executive director and then had that meeting on Thursday, so I apologize for not reporting on that. Happy to report that Lori's just doing a fantastic job in regards to what, how she's leading, in really a time of uncertainty for funding, really doing the best to be as financially conservative as possible, while also making sure that services are being delivered. And then we did have a great update from HR on the components that they're working through. I know HR world is kind of tricky, too, as different requirements are going through, but that was helpful. And then we did have a very good dialogue in the VITA tax site that continues to be present in Clay and Wilken Counties as tax prep season is upon us. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to March 18th. I did attend the Personnel Issues Committee meeting, which action was taken today regarding that hiring of a deputy sheriff, while the, one of our members, one of our deputies is on military deployment. And then on, last week, I was, I attended virtually a meeting on the, on March 25th with the Triple RDC. Commissioner Ebinger has reported on that, and I think really the, the main topic of discussion there were the two change orders that, that he explained. And on the 27th, I attended the MCC JPA meeting, and we, you know, we get our usual land updates and where we are percentage-wise in completion. Commissioner Mojo talked about the one, one agreement that we had settled, a purchase agreement, settlement agreement that we have with a landowner there, and part of that agreement was that we would build a ring levy for them as part of that agreement. And that, the reason that ring levy was allowed to be done is because it met all the criteria that the Diversion Authority staff and engineers felt was reasonable and could be, and the ring levy could be sustainable, so. That was that, and that concludes my committee report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 25th, I participated in Kimberly's compliance report update that Commissioner Ebinger has talked about. On the 25th, I also met with Sheriff Empteen on a series of county issues. On the 26th, I think I met with everyone, every commissioner here, except for Commissioner Campbell last, on, on certain issues on, on the 26th. Also on the, I met with Dale Arnold and Joe. As this board knows, we've been kind of having to have, have discussed a vision of this facility here at the courthouse, kind of morphing into a justice center over the last several months, just about a year. Joe has been working with the Department of Corrections in looking at different places within the facility that would bring all of their probation into one building. There, there was funding that was initially secured from the state of Minnesota to, to make the funding with, like a lot of things with the upcoming budget out there, that dollar amount was cut fairly significantly, and at this point, it would not, the, the remodel of areas on the first floor came out to between 600 and 640,000 dollars, which unfortunately, at this time, the Department of Corrections in the state of Minnesota does not have. And so, that, that'll be placed on hold for this moment. I think that there was benefit in going through the process. As you recall, they had an engineer, structural engineer look through the different areas as a part of the study that the state paid for, and so I think that'll be benefits as, benefits as either one, we move forward with the Department of Corrections in the future and/or future needs of the county. 27th, participated in the MCC JPA meeting, which has been covered. Also, met on the 28th, met the flood mitigation with the Chamber and Morehead that's been, been addressed. Also, the non-secure detention meeting with Senator Kupac, Senator Kupac and on funding for a non-secure detention. That evening, I did participate with several of you in this room. The Chief Monroe was retiring. We want to thank him for the relationship of the work that he's done here with, in Clay County and with our, with our Sheriff's Department, wish him well in retirement. Participated in the water district meeting that's been well addressed. Also, this afternoon, we do have a Clay County EDC, EDA meeting here at the courthouse. On Thursday, we are also going to be having our Rural Cities and County Meeting at the Law Enforcement Center from 4:00 to 6:00, and, and on an upbeat note, the Seventh Annual Clay County Soil and Water District Pollinator Night will be April 22nd. So, with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. I just want to, Brian, do you have something? Darren?
Very briefly, I also attended the annual compliance meeting that Kimberly had. She'll be bringing that to the board at a later date during her budget briefing. I also attended the Compliance Committee kickoff meeting with Rory Schmidt and mostly the department heads, looking at trying to get a compliance, all of our compliance is in one area and in one document. We talked about Government Data Practices Acts, FOIA requests, talked about data retention, those type of things. Wednesday, I had a discussion with our jail administrator, chief deputy sheriff and HR director, reference to personnel issue, started work on the 2026 budget. That was fun. Worked on the county code with Mark and, Mark and Brian on Wednesday, the 26th. Yeah, that's depressing. Also, on Thursday, continued work on the 2026 budget, and had a meeting with Mark Sloan and Steve, and then listened in on the Minnesota Association of County Administrators Conference Call they have on Fridays. Very entertaining also. They talked about the paid leave and some of the, the things that they're trying to do with that, and also it seemed like some progress, at least according to AMC, there's some progress on the technology improvements to the human services and, and social services technology issues, which was, was certainly needed, and, and that was it.
Jackie?
Okay, I just, a couple things. I, I just wanted to say thank you to our Administrator Larson. I, I was gone last week, but I was able to be in touch by email, and I believe some of you, you others were also informed about a letter he was sending out to our external agencies that, that we fund, and I think the letter was appropriate and timely, as we heard again this morning, and of all of the new things that might be coming forward at the state level that could really have an impact on our 2026 budget. I think it's, I think it's important for everybody to really understand the difficulties that we may be having with a $6 billion deficit at the state level, and in addition to that, new program requirements that are falling down on us through the mandates at the state level, and also that Steve mentioned that he's, he has talked already with your, with the individual department heads in regards to this same issue moving forward. So, I think that early on, discussions on that is really important. And Steve, I just want to follow up with you to a conversation I had with you regarding, and my computer last week reminded me of it when I was about to get online, and I had to spend six hours updating my old computer before I could do anything, and noticed the word, I used the word "old" computer. And I, I still would like to have a conversation with Rory about these laptops, when they're turned in. I, I believe that there's a better alternative than what we're currently doing, which would allow these laptops to be used by people who might otherwise not have the ability to get them. So, I, I'd like to have that conversation, and I know I've spoken individually with, with our commissioners, and I, I think there's an agreement there that we could do something better and more significant with those, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will certainly line something up. I've had some conversations both with Rory and also Lori Johnson in regard to that, and so that, maybe that would be something we could bring up at a upcoming work session or something.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, we will stand adjourned.